Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of January 25th, 2022 is now called to order. The time is 6:01. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Ms. Gittens will be joining this meeting by phone. Ms. Gittens, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Mr. Prey Bruno, please address Board Policy 1.112C.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.11 subsection 2C, Ms. Gittens is allowed to participate and to vote by phone due to her particular circumstances, which meets the requirements of 2C.
This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance. Public comments, consent, action items, which include two items under Board Office, which one is good cause. As the chair, the one good cause item is approval of the final three interview candidates for the superintendent search as follows. Christopher Bournier, Randy Mullerwine, Michael Ramirez. As president, as presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. Eight items under academic services, four items under business services, six items under human resources, one item under information systems, 12 items under operations. Which one is good cause? Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Yes, Madam Chair. This item was added because of the need for water pressure in Fort Myers, the city of Fort Myers. It's extremely critical right now. We need to get this approved so that the city can begin to work on the two wells that they are placing on our property to alleviate some of those water pressure issues that not only the district but the community are facing.
Thank you. As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. One item under Lee County School Board Leeson Corporation, one item under attorney's recommendation, which is good cause. Mr. Prey Bruno, please provide an explanation for this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As part of an ongoing process, board policies are reviewed to determine if changes need to be recommended to the school board for approval, modification, or deletion. Given the law that was passed in November 2021, which prohibits mask mandates by school boards and school districts, Florida Statute 1002.20 subsection 3N, Board Policy 1.181 is no longer legally valid and must be removed.
Thank you. As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. And four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. In a second, please. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. And please record your vote. Can you? Thank you. I wasn't sure if you were able to do it by computer, so thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Fisher will lead us in the invocation, after which Ms. Giavennelli will lead us in the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Fisher, please lead us in the invocation at this time.
Thank you. Please rise. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to meet here this evening and ask you to bless all here present. We ask that you bestow upon this board the wisdom, understanding, and desire to come together and make decisions that will benefit our students. Please guide the superintendent and his staff as they perform the daily tasks required to keep us informed and our students and staff inspired and safe. Please look upon us and grant all that we need to guide our students in these times of change and challenge. For this and your many blessings, we thank you. Amen.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Yes. Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is First Sergeant Anthony Garrus, Army instructor from Gateway High School. First Sergeant Garrus served 29 years in the Army in numerous assignments and retired as the first sergeant of the Army Reserve Training Center at Fort Knox. This is the First Sergeant Garrus's eighth year in the JRTC instructor and his second year in Lee County. Thank you for your service, sir.
I'm honored. Thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Kayla Cabrera, the Cadet Commander of Gateway High School JRTC program. Cadet Cabrera is the school's first-ever battalion commander and has done an outstanding job creating the culture of the new program. Cadet Cabrera is active in all aspects of JRTC. She is the captain of the Raider mixed team and the JRTC Academic Bowl team. She also was the driving force behind the school's first-ever toy drive at Christmas that supported local elementary schools. Cadet Cabrera is at the top of her class at Gateway and is enrolled in the school with Cambridge program. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Yes, thank you. This evening's student representative from the district's Student Advisory Committee is Aubrey Duncan, a seventh grader at Challenger Middle School. Aubrey likes to spread kindness every day by sharing a kind note with teachers around her school. Aubrey also runs a lemonade stand and a kindness cart, which has been featured on NBC2 News. To date, Aubrey has raised and donated over $1,000 to local animal rescues. As a profound animal lover, she herself has 15 rabbits, four cats, three birds, two guinea pigs, a fish, and a horse. Aubrey is a member of the National Honor Junior Honor Society and student council member at her school. She has volunteered at Community Cooperative to feed the homeless, helped collect canned goods for Harry Chapin Food Bank, and led her student council in the making of holiday cards for troops overseas. In the future, Aubrey would like to attend Mariner High School to obtain the veterinary tech certification and later on hopes to become a veterinarian. Welcome, Aubrey.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, and we will be hearing from Aubrey later in the meeting. The next on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Prey Bruno, please address the item of public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway. The rules concerning public comment are posted and will be made from the microphone in the back. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Please remember that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20 speakers, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction. Madam Chair, there are 13 speakers for this evening.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comments. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. I wanted to see if they were inside or outside, so I apologize. Inside. In addition, if there is not decorum during this meeting, I will call for a five-minute recess. We will continue to recess this meeting as needed, increasing five minutes each time. Members of the dais, when a recess is called, I ask that you leave the chamber. Of course, it goes without saying that during the recess, board members will not discuss any matters that is pending on the agenda or will come before this body to avoid any sunshine violation. I will reiterate what Mr. Prey Bruno just said, in that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with school board meeting. We would appreciate it if you would state your name prior to making your comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone who has not filled out a comment card? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Prey Bruno, will you please begin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will the following individuals please line up? Randy Scott, Amy B., Karen G., Sharon McGill, Denise Nystrom.
Good evening, Mr. Scott. And the time, Mr. Prey Bruno?
It's going to be three minutes.
And it'll be up on the screen?
Yes.
Good evening. As I was sitting here, I was thinking of Leila Aiken. You remember about this time a couple of years ago, she was run over at her bus stop on a corner, which the board has done nothing about removing bus stops from corners. I'd like to talk about Lee Ratner from Lee High Acres. Lee Ratner started his business finding a load of bananas that were soon to be unripe, and he bought it from the truck driver for $250. He turned around and sold it for $1,700. That was his first venture in innovation and creativity and capitalism. Lee Ratner would be a good name to choose for this school, and I think that his efforts at innovation and creativity could inspire a lot of people who would look up his name. He's a Chicagoan, which is close to my heart, and he served in the military during World War II. Lee Ratner went ahead and grabbed a hold of a patent for warfarin that wasn't being used, and he converted it to take care of rodents, and he created Decon. Decon was then sold, and after he sold Decon, he needed a place to place his money, so he bought the acreage in Lee High Acres, and he developed the land. I think Lee Ratner would be a great choice to inspire children towards innovation and creativity that our capitalist system brings. So I would also like to share with you something I heard today in regards to us building a gun range at the technical center. I find it interesting that the chief of Cape Coral at the time in 2015, he proposed a new police service unit, and in it was a gun range. He pushed it, but the city council members in Cape Coral denied him. Then, just as recently as 2019, they sought $500,000 from our state legislature. They approved it, but when it got to our respectful Governor DeSantis's office, he vetoed it. I would hope that this board starts spending its constitutional money on public education instead of using your facilities as a go-through, as a strawman to pay for parks in Astero, to pay for ranges in Cape Coral. This is why I struggle with so many people outside of this district, because it's become a boondoggle of money taken from the taxpayers. I'm asking for you to exercise some discipline and stop spending our money away from public education.
Hello. My name is Amy, and I'm proudly a retired public school teacher. I come to support the Lee County Public Schools today. Our children are our most important asset, and we have an obligation to provide them with the best schools possible so that they can grow up to be contributing citizens to our county and/or elsewhere. That is the job of the public schools and is one of the reasons the United States is a great nation. We provide a free public school education to every child. This is a point of pride for us all. It is foundational. It is the purpose of the public schools, and it's why they were created, education for all. Prior to the pandemic, I volunteered in a school for several years. The county has fabulous, caring, hard-working teachers who go the extra mile every day. How can we support them? How can we attract new teachers? Even more important, how can we show our veteran teachers they are valued and oh so important to our schools? How can we support our bus drivers? They do such important work transporting our students. School of Choice depends on maintaining a fleet of buses and the staff to drive them, providing students with a safe way to get to school. Finally, our school board. Thank you all for your important role in educating the children of Lee County, setting standards for achievement, being accessible to the public, working diligently to provide opportunities to receive a high-quality education, allowing our students to succeed in their career or college and to become contributing citizens. I am here because I believe in public education and I want to see it supported. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Kristi Divigeli, Heather Boyle, Marsha Ellis, Robert Roper, Jen Water.
Good evening, ma'am. You may begin. The clock will be right up here on the screen for you.
Okay, start.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sharon McGill, and again, thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight and for your service to the community. And I would also like to thank you for allowing last week Ms. Malley, I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly, to give us the information about the $35 million budget item that there seemed to be some confusion about, and so she clarified that for us so that we understood that it had nothing to do with fresh produce and our previous supplier. And she also mentioned that the current produce vendor was providing stellar service for the district, so thank you for clarifying that information for us. Moving on, after the last meeting on the 11th, I checked the books that were assigned to the board members. One was Beloved, which was released in 1987, and then one of the other ones was More Happy Than Not in 2015. The other ones fell sometime in between those years. And because of the disparity in how old some of these books have been released, I started to question what the real motive is behind this what appears to be sweeping book removal campaign that has recently surfaced. There seems to be some kind of attempted coordination to remove a wide range of materials covering certain topics by certain groups. Well-educated, trained librarians are the stewards of library information. They serve all kids in the community and should not be expected or intimidated into choosing books that only satisfy a particular group of parents or activists. Libraries are a cornerstone of the school experience and should serve the information needs of all students by providing a wide range of information. Granted, with such a broad spectrum of ideas and information available, it will be inevitable someone will encounter resources they believe to be offensive or inappropriate and want to protect the children. However, their rights do not preclude other parents' rights, and so they have the right and responsibility to monitor their own children, but not everybody else's. So I propose that if it's a situation with books in the library, that the district start a parental supervision library program, and parents can opt in to have their children's choices in library books monitored only by the parents. That way, the parents have rights and responsibilities, and every other parent does as well. Thank you.
Denise Nystrom. Tonight, I want to express my support for the bus drivers in Lee County. The bus drivers have attended school board meetings for months to tell you that they deserve a raise. It appears that it might have fallen on deaf ears, but I hope not. So I read the transportation contract, and I realized that they do not have a defined workday. Yes, they get paid for eight hours a day, but the workday is not defined in terms of the number of runs they do. Since they are down 150 bus drivers, the school district has saved the school district has saved a lot of money by not hiring additional bus drivers. So let's say that for the past five years, the bus drivers have done four runs per day. And now they're doing six or eight runs a day without extra compensation. No wonder they're upset. The workday needs to be defined in terms of the number of runs that they are required to do, and when they go above and beyond those runs, they need to be compensated for them. Because we, the public, whose tax dollars ultimately pay their salary increases, have been asking you to settle with the bus drivers for months, please give them the raise they deserve. As I remember the years that I was a special education teacher, I want to express my support for all teachers and counselors in the district. Mrs. Gittens asked a good question during the superintendent interviews: what can be done about teacher shortages? If the candidates read the teacher's contract, they would know that they start at $47,000 a year and then go up by $500 a year for the next 20 years. That's about $2.50 a day, not even enough to cover a car payment each month. If you want to recruit teachers and retain teachers, provide them with annual increases that help them to live in an area where the economy far exceeds their salaries. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I want to take a minute and just thank everybody for what they do. Thank the teachers, thank the board. I like to say this a lot, but it's true. We've all been through a pandemic for two years now. So, you know, I think it's been hard on everyone. I do want to speak clearly to something that was spoken at the last board meeting by someone who gave public comment, and I think it needs to be revisited. I'm gonna read the quote that was from public comment at the last meeting. This person said, "A terrorist organization known as BLM, which has proved to be nothing more than that." "A terrorist organization known as BLM", which is Black Lives Matter, "which has proved to be nothing more than that." So I'd like to make a couple of comments on that. First of all, if 14% of our 95,000 students are black or African-American, and they are, he just spoke to 13,300 students and their families. Second, it's not the job of citizens to designate terrorism to a group. It is the job of the FBI, it is the job of Homeland Security. This is, not only promotes hate, but it's just wrong and it's not true. I wonder if there are certain instances, I think this would be really valuable, where the board, or the superintendent, or the lawyer can fact-check or discount misinformation that could be harmful when it's spoken to the microphone. Black Lives Matters facts, here's a few for you. Number one, it wasn't just Minneapolis and Florida, it was 2,000 cities and towns. It was all 50 states. It was 60 countries, including Ireland and the UK. It was all seven continents, including Antarctica. That was Black Lives Matter. So for us to allow it to be called a terrorist organization from our microphone in this public school system in Lee County is just unacceptable. So my request is that there's conversation about that, and there's ways to handle things like that. One way would be to fact-check from the dais, but perhaps another way would be to have discussions going into new superintendent hire and have discussions on how to write this into a contract. I mentioned last time I gave public comment that there's a lot of information out there, and we all agree that some of it's true and some of it's lies. But we seem to disagree on how to tell the difference. So I want to bring up again vast practice policies, which are all over the Florida Department of Education website as a standard, and the gold standard that we should refer to, unless there's something better, but thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, Jen Wata. I'm not sure if you remember me, I'm the resident that moved here to an A-county school, rated school 15 years ago, to be turned around to a C-rated school. I'm sure you now remember me, because I'm spreading the word. Trust me. Okay, I am also here to speak to the public, because I am a Lee County activist. Last meeting, two weeks ago, there was talk about unity. Okay, we all want unity. However, that's a bit of a joke right now because of what has gone on for the last several years, and even more so recently, with letting your own political views get in the way of our children. Example, Alfie Oakes. We all know what's been happening, this has been said many times, all because of a post on Facebook. Ms. Patricia M. Bruno decides to take it to the board to cancel her contract, which resolves in a bunch of millions of extras dollars spent on food, which could have been hired to get your teachers back that left because of your ridiculous shenanigans. Okay, so let's talk about unity. Okay, so now they decide to cancel him, which is another big no-no, because they didn't even take it to the public comment, which is now a violation of the sunshine laws. Okay, of course, again, now our children are suffering. Also, I want to mention, not only we want unity, but we also want the CRT, the sexual explicit illustrations that support the transgender, the LBGQ, and pornography in our books. Okay, great job, board. Okay, yeah, that's why I want to bring that up. I want to thank the board for that. I want to thank the board for those textbooks, okay? This has been going on for years. I want to thank them for those sexual explicit illustrations in our textbooks, okay? Speaking of our children and the food, okay? I have two children in high school right now. Two years ago, they've stopped eating your food because you caused them diarrhea. That's why I said diarrhea. Okay, first of all, my kids have not gone to the bathroom since they were elementary children in fifth grade because of the bathroom situations that you people have not done anything about. You're letting people walk in wherever they want to walk, and my kids are scared. Not only have they held their pee since elementary school, they are now holding their diarrhea. Okay, they cannot eat your food, I have to send them with food because they have diarrhea, and they come home and they run right to the bathroom with the squirts. That's right, I said the squirts. Okay, how do you people feel about hearing about that? Okay, because of all this, and I'm so glad this is an election year, because all eyes will be on those four seats. Okay, all I can do is I suggest to you is to go in forward, because all eyes will be on you to debisting for our children, and perhaps there will be unity. Thank you.
My name is Robert Roper.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Roper. This book, it's perfectly normal. I personally sat across the table with six of the seven board members and the other one by phone, and you saw this book with your own eyes. Most of you handled it and looked at the contents. That was over a year ago. This month, it was finally removed. It's out, praise God, but it took over a year. Shame. Today, you had the first reading of Proposed Board Policy 4.221: Suicide Prevention. I regret that I was unable to attend the briefing in person due to other commitments. According to your own website, suicide is the third-leading cause of death in youth, and in LGBTQ individuals, two to three times more likely to attempt suicide. If I would have been in your briefing today, I would have presented this book to you, titled 13 Reasons Why by J. Asher. It's a novel totally dedicated to suicide. There are 98 copies of this book in Lee County schools, 16 at South Fort Myers, 18 in Bonita. This indicates to me that it's probably being required reading by a teacher. Suicide is a complex and personal issue. I do not know anyone that is trained and skilled enough to tackle this problem from a classroom setting. This is one problem that should be left to the parents and professionals, not the schools. Many in mental health care claim that this book could prompt troubled young people to copy the suicide, its central character Hannah Baker. 13 Reasons Why can be found in numerous middle schools across the county, ages starting at 10 years old. And the Success Academy, you might remember, that's where you can also find the book Killing Mr. Griffin, a book about kidnapping and killing a teacher. Suicide and murder at a school that serves kids that are already in trouble. It has been a full two weeks since I requested five of you to do your job to protect children in the areas that you were elected to serve. The response has been totally underwhelming at best. Great titles like Sloppy First and Two Boys Kissing can still be checked out. In an attempt to address the accusation that I'm advocating for censorship, allow me to point out, it is a fact that the district uses Chromebooks and issues them to the students. Pornography and other undesirable sites and books are censored by the district. It is well-known fact that if a student brings pornography or inappropriate literature into the school, it will be confiscated as censorship. Someone is censoring materials. I would ask you, by what standard? Because it is not by the standard of the parents. To the seven elected officials and the superintendent, I ask you to lead, follow, or get out of the way.
Good evening.
Heather Boyle. In reference to the new mental health policies 4.221 and 4.222, there are a ton of concern. I'm wondering if the school district is so concerned about mental health, why are they having books such as 13 Reasons Why in the library about suicide? As Pastor Roper just said, there are currently 98 copies of this book in different schools, multiple middle and high schools, including the Success Academy. This novel is about suicide. It follows a high school girl who kills herself after creating a series of tapes for her classmates to play after her death. She gave the tapes to people who influenced her decision. Critics say that this book romanticizes suicide. Some would argue that suicide is a very real threat to our young people, and therefore, books like this are needed. Others would say books like this can lead to suicide. I will leave you to make up your own mind about that. A Colorado community ordered librarians to temporarily stop circulating the book after seven students killed themselves. There is no direct evidence that any of the students who killed themselves were inspired by the series of this book. It is proven that the teenage brain has yet to be developed maturely to see the long-term results of different decisions, which is why teens are typically impulsive and willing to take risks that you and I would not, and make poor decisions. Dr. Helen Rayner, a psychiatrist specializing in children adolescent mental health, says dramatic and detailed portrayals of suicide needlessly put vulnerable young people at risk of copycat behavior as they see how to carry out harmful or potentially fatal acts. This would be better introduced when a person is an adult and can understand suicide as a permanent solution to a temporary problem. This should never be an option at local schools. If parents are so interested in their children reading it, they can go to the library or purchase the book themselves.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kristi Divigeli. It's freezing in here today. Last meeting, you guys sweat us out of here, and today it's like Antarctica. Okay, first, I'd like to comment on F1, which is the travel to the FSBA Legislature Day. So I would love to support this if you guys were not going through the FSBA. I'd be happy to support it and would have nothing to say about it. But since you are going with the FSBA, and I do not support them, I do not support F1. F2, final three interview candidates. You know, I was reading on Wink News last night, and somebody mentioned it in the board meeting today. I'm just very curious why Wink News gave us information on the three finalists before you ever even took consensus today. I don't know how that happened. I don't know if that was like a mishap on the district's part, or if that had something to do with Wink, and they were just preemptive. Or I don't know what that was, but I'd love an explanation to that. Next one is H8, the approval of the amendment to the fiscal year 22 IDEA Part B entitlement grant. My only issue with this one is its purpose, which is to correct a budget account line oversight in the original project application. That's a very large correction. Just saying. The next one, in regards to the super search. What can we do to fix the current teacher shortages? You can hire Randy Mahlerlein, the only candidate who has extensive experience in professional development, which is what we are desperately, desperately lacking in this school district. What else? Oh, policy 1.181. Rarely do I ever thank Ms. Bruno for things, but thank you for finally putting this on the agenda and getting this removed. The next one would be, oh yeah. Thank you, whoever put the time clocks back in the transportation area. I appreciate that. What do I have next? Oh yeah, so I am one of the parent reps on the community committee for the superintendent search, and I am still waiting on my invitation to attend that little get-together with the potential candidates. And then the last thing I would have to say is that we are in an election season. We are in an election year. And parents are greater than politics. And that's all I'd like to say.
Will the following individuals please line up? Tara Jenner, Jaclyn Perez, Kathy Stout.
Good evening. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Marcia Ellis. And I would like to begin today by speaking to the power of unity, because eventually, everyone has to come together, and we are stronger through discourse. We may not agree on every topic, but we become better, we become smarter by sharing ideas that come from different places. If we become an echo chamber, then our community suffers, and our intellect suffers, and we don't reach that consensus that our community so desperately needs. I believe in creating solutions. And as a former teacher, I understand that many teachers feel demoralized. And they feel demoralized for a variety of reasons. They're covering classes, for instance, because some of their colleagues are sick or they're short-staffed. They may feel demoralized because they don't feel respected by the political climate. And they feel like some of these issues are distracting the community and distracting the teachers and the public school system from those kitchen-table topics that affect everyone in the community. Some of these topics, like, for instance, the debate over CRT or Don't Say Gay, or the Individual Freedom Act that limit the ability of teachers to have conversations about gender or conversations about feminism or racism. Teachers feel threatened. I know that recently, it just came up in this past week, that one of the school districts had canceled a contract with a speaker who was simply going to make a presentation about civil rights because they didn't want to get caught up in that turmoil. And so I feel like that the political climate is interfering with the teachers' abilities to practice their profession. That concerns me. I'm also concerned about those kitchen-table issues, like affordable housing and fair pay. I want to point out that these contracts for teacher salaries are negotiated by unions, and that we, as a community, all of the public sector, works through those unions in order to be able to negotiate those fair contracts. It concerns me if there is negativity in the community towards collective bargaining that our teachers are guaranteed. And that's why I've been very upset about the statement of Alfie Oak, that he said, "These corrupt teachers' unions are the enemy of our country and our citizens. We need to take them down by force. All enemies, foreign and domestic, time for a revolution." Followed by a statement on August 20th in which he said he had 3,200 guns to arm all of his employees. It is very difficult to negotiate if you live in a community where-
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Stout. I'd like to talk about old business and new business, but let's start with the old business. At our last meeting, we did mention about the $35 million that is going to be spent on these refrigerators. Point of view, did you realize that you're going to spend more than $35 million if you install these in our schools? You have your electric bills, you have the maintenance. So they do break down. So you're gonna waste more taxpayer dollars, just so you know that. So you're going to waste more taxpayer dollars, just so you know that. In addition, I also mentioned the last meeting that our bathrooms and our schools are not clean. And with that said, I know there's some kids who are coming home and explaining this to the parents. Why? Because I have heard it through the grapevine, through the kids and the parents reaching out to me, just to let you know. So I would really think, if you're in such of, you know, if you're really considering, thinking about the safety of the welfare for our children, I would think cleaning is the most important key before the kids go back to school, during school, in school, and after school. So please, take your time and take that $35 million out of that budget, and let's get these schools cleaned. That's old news, part of it. Another thing I'd like to mention, last week, or I'm sorry, at the last meeting, we talked about certain books in our districts. I do have a lot of complaints on this, due to the fact that we are not educating our children to our best. And with that said, I really believe that we have it in our hearts, in our souls, that we want the best for our children, do we not? Question mark? Because if we did, this would never have been a discussion in the first place, and the parents wouldn't have to wonder why consistently we are not going back into schools. Why are we not going back to schools? Why can't the parents go back to schools? This is a big concern of mine. Parents do very well with teachers, the administrators, and everybody else who belongs in school. Now, I know for the past years that my children have been in school, I was always part of their school districts, all the time. So, and it's not just about, you know, school trips. It's about school libraries and participating and doing things in aid of school, and you can do it. So, you know, if you're so worried about the budget, give the teachers their money, and let the parents get back in, and let them do it, because there's plenty of parents who want to volunteer their time. Thank you. Waiting for the, there we go. Tara Jenner. I've carefully reviewed the superintendent candidates, and like many, I've written comments to you all. In short, only one candidate seems to be viable for our district, in my humble opinion. That's Randy Mollerwine. Earlier today, Mr. Javonelli commented that he may be too nice for our district. May I suggest that we need a little more nice here, and that he could possibly be the very person who could set the standards that others can strive to achieve. He's thoughtful, a team player, and willing to state when the buck stops here, once all is evaluated and a decision is made. We need that kind of initial evaluation on issues, and then decisiveness once made. Nice is not synonymous with being a pushover. Additionally, comments made earlier that only Mr. Ramirez is bilingual must have been made based only on his name and the fact that he comes from Puerto Rico, because no one asked any of the candidates that question. It's a little presumptuous, if you ask me. I, for example, speak Spanish, English, German, and Italian, and am in learning Korean. But if you looked at me and looked at my name, you would never know that. So with interpreters available, in fact, required, I don't see why this is necessarily something that would be a major selling point for him or against the other candidates. I'd like full transparency from the board and have disclosure on how each of the board members by name rated the candidates during their workshop. It's not to help us rate the superintendent, as it is to help us rate you and see what your qualifications are for these candidates. We'd like to hold you accountable, especially in light of the fact that four of you, your seats are up for reelection this year. Why all the cloak and daggers? I'd also like to know when the general meet and greet is going to be for the community. The website calendar section under the superintendent has been woefully underutilized. Knowing what's going on has been hit or miss, and it's scattered everywhere. You say you post this notification, but where you post it seems to be a mystery. Finally, I'd also like to make sure the superintendent candidates are facing the audience and the camera when they're interviewed. This was not done during any of the prior events that you've been doing leading up to this, and frankly, we don't want to see your faces, we want to see theirs, because their countenance is a player. We want to feel included in the process, instead of making it feel as though you're just checking a box for that. It's also common courtesy. I'd also like to note that the press's comment about the three candidates seems to be more indicative of what the public sees, that your consensus during workshops is a final, because I've never seen you ever change your position after hearing public comment. You de facto make conclusions at those workshops absent public comment. Let's put public back in the public schools. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. This afternoon, the board attorney made a comment about an appeal that didn't take place, and I'm here to read the filing. 1424-24450, filed on 1/21/2022 at 2:16 PM, notice of appeal. Notice is given that pursuant to Florida Rule of Appellate Procedure 9.110, defendant, the School District of Lee County, Florida, appeals to the Florida District Court of Appeals. Second District, the order granting in part and denying in part plaintiff's motion to compel and for contempt, which was rendered on or after January 12th. The nature of the appeal is an appeal of a final order of contempt, which was submitted by the attorneys, which are the defendants for this school district, by Christopher Donovan and Jim Fox. How your attorney did not know this, I have no idea. I spoke to three board members, who told me they didn't even know there was an appeal in. And the reasoning, I believe, for the appeal is because Judge Fuller found that this school board violated Florida Statute 286.011, illegal polling. The court finds that the personal notes of the defendant's chief of staff, Lauren Stillwell, hearing the date and time of Thursday, June 11, 2020, at 8:59 AM, which memorized the individual telephone conversations of the superintendent with each of the seven school board members, are akin to minutes documenting what appears to be polling of the school board members. So these clandestine meetings that you're having, making decisions over contracts, individuals and employees needs to stop. This has been a consistent occurrence of this school district. I'm really bothered to see that in 2019 through 2020, the Henderson firm was paid $4 million, approximately $4,100,000, from a credit card rebate program. That did not include checks or other payments made to them, and that's only one firm that you utilized to fight parents, employees, and vendors, when you are wrong. When vendors are targeted, or employees are targeted, and parents and children are not, their needs are not being met, you decide to come at them like a mafia and put all these taxpayers' monies into fighting these people instead of mediating. And I'm very disappointed that the board is not taking action. You know where the problems came from. If you look at your federal court documents, it specifically states that while Patrica couched her email to Bruno as a question, Patrica is known by the other board members to direct district staff to take action pursuant to Patrica's own individual will. When is this board going to stand up? Stop the hundreds of thousands of dollars that you are wasting, fighting the Oaks Farms contract when you illegally canceled it, and hold her accountable.
Any other?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Scott, thank you for bringing that information to us. I had read that as well regarding Mr. Ratner, so I thank you for that. And thank you all for caring about our bus drivers. We definitely, that is one thing that we are constantly working on, and we all appreciate how hard that the bus drivers and everyone else is working in the district. And I'm just going down my list here. Dr. Savage, can you please respond to the, because I believe, and I maybe I wrote down the wrong thing about refrigeration in these schools? We were not putting refrigeration into the schools. Could you please respond on that? It was refrigerations for the food to be held, not for the refrigerations at our schools.
I'd actually have to get a written response to be more specific. So it was in regards to the 32 million?
There was a comment that was made about us putting refrigerations into the schools, I believe it was, which was not what we're doing.
I just would hate to enter anything in the record that's not accurate, just on the spot of this piece. I just don't want to create a dialogue back and forth. I know that Ms. Malley addressed in detail at our most recent meeting where this item was brought up, and I'd rather say, if there's any substantive elements of what she explained, that anyone would want us to detail, if they in some way believe that it's inaccurate, I would want them to be very specific about what that is, other than just a general dismissal of what our staff took the time to bring to this board and have it recorded, rather than engage in it during a public comment session. That would be my recommendation, just so that I don't make any erroneous statements related to that particular piece.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. DePree Bruno, you were going to state something? Were you going to say something?
I was going to just clarify with regards to the notice of appeal, but I'll wait till you finish, or if you want me to do that now.
Yep, if you would, please.
All right, so I just want to make sure that there's no misinformation. A notice of appeal was filed in the Brachi versus School Board of Lee County. This is not the contract case that is currently pending in federal court with Alfie Oaks. Those are two different cases, and we need to be careful that we're not conflating both cases, because one is a circuit court case, and one is a federal case. Two different cases with two different captions. The plaintiff in the circuit court case is Brachi, not Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. DePree Bruno, for that.
And since this was brought up in public comment, the reason there is a notice of appeal is because of certain things that were in the order that the district does not believe is accurate.
Thank you, Ms. DePree Bruno. And as far as Wink, I've heard Wink twice. We do not control what the news media puts out there, so we have no knowledge of why anything was put out there. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And as far as our students, we do care about what's going on with our students, and we want to make sure that our students have good meals. And my kids are grown, they're adults, they're in their, well, they're up there. And they've always complained about meals when they were in school. They didn't like, the best day for them was pizza day. The best day for Ms. Javonelli's granddaughter is taco day. So our kids, not necessarily, I mean, we follow the guidelines that are placed for us, but that has been an issue for kids as long as I can remember. But we do, I work in the cafeteria a lot, I see what's going on in our cafeterias, I see the food that the kids are getting. They're getting a lot of food, they're eating their food, as well as they bring their food. But we provide free lunches for every single student in Lee County. So not only at the school, we serve them, a lot of them take food home for dinner, as well as on the weekend. So we are definitely feeding our children. Thank you for the information about bathrooms, the dirtiness, or the presumed dirty bathrooms. I do see how hard are the janitors and custodians and everyone is working in there, the teachers, the, everybody, it's all hands on deck, and they are cleaning, they're sterilizing everything. They are working very hard. They are, I see it. And then today, I know that a few people had spoke to Ms. Vaughn, and a couple other people had spoken to Dr. Savage regarding volunteers. We know how important volunteers are in our schools, and Dr. Savage, you had stated that you were going to bring that to the pandemic team to see how we can move that forward so we can get people back in our schools. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's, it's a balancing act, as we talked about earlier in our meetings, a balancing act of the risk, the additional risks, but understanding that if this, we've already been through this for two years, we're in the height of the next, of this most recent surge. However, we also recognize that the resources for our schools, the level of engagement, that's something that we'll have to balance. And we have been balancing, but I'll be bringing that most recent feedback to the pandemic team, and I look forward to a recommendation.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, and moving on, the next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documents for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the materials, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or worked up with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table items portion of this agenda? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
In a departure from normal protocol, I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Item P is not part of the consent agenda, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I have no pulls. Please, and thank you.
Wait a second. Ms. DePree Bruno, item P is part of it, correct?
No, that's going to...
But we still have to take a separate motion.
That's going to require a separate discussion.
Separate discussion, correct, thank you, okay. Ms. Gittens? Ms. Gittens, are you still with us?
I'm going to mute sometimes.
Do we know if she's still with us? I'm going to go beyond then. Ms. Vaughn?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
I'll move that we approve the agenda's consent action items.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Motion by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Please record your vote. Dr. Savage, please read your recommendations. Oh, I'm so sorry, I just went beyond that. Dr. Savage, please introduce, thank you, any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that were approved under the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, it would be my privilege. I'd like to introduce Dana Philpott, from Allen Park Elementary, Assistant Principal to Professional Development Coordinator in the Professional Development. Dana. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, congratulations. We will not hold you up, so if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to do so, and congratulations. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we will now recess the regular school board meeting. We're going to the Lees Corp script. Okay. This is the 1/25/22 meeting, the Lee County School Board, Lees and Corporation. The order of business is, as President of the Lee County School Board, Lees and Corporation, I would like to call this meeting of January 25, 2022, to order. The time is 7:03. This evening's agenda includes public comments, two secretaries' recommendation, other business, and adjournment. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. And is there a second? Ms. Morgan? Thank you. There has been a motion to adopt the agenda by Ms. Vaughn and seconded by Ms. Morgan. All those in favor signify by... All those in favor signify by aye. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Can you please tell me if it's, are you in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Ms. Patrica, Ms. Jivinelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes. So seven to zero, motion carries. Okay, public comments, we will now take public comment. Ms. DePree Bruno, please address the agenda item of public comment.
Yes, Madam Chair, let me see if there's anyone here for public comment. I don't see anybody listed for-
I do have, we do have some in it.
Did they fill out a card?
Okay, is there anyone on the right? Okay, is there anybody on the left side? Okay, if you will please fill out a card.
And this is for the leasing corporation?
If you would like to address the directors regarding any actions proposed to be taken by the Lee County School Board Lees and Corporation.
Hi, Kristy DiVigili. I just want to know, I was reading the minutes on the, I was reading the minutes on the draft in the attachment, and I just had a really quick question. It states that Debbie is, Debbie was the president last year, Betsy was the vice, Atkins was the secretary, and Desmore was the treasurer. I just want to know what happened when Atkins was no longer, so like when he was, when he was no longer with us, did Savage automatically, was he automatically placed as the secretary next, or how, I just wanted to know how that worked, just a little clarity there. That was all, thank you.
Do you have, you may. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Jordan. Earlier, I asked a question, and I just want to ask it again, and I know that you don't answer, but I think it is a very relevant question. If anybody has any contact, knows any of the school board candidates personally, through organizations, through friends of friends, and not school board candidates, I'm sorry, superintendent candidates?
I, I'm sorry, it's, the questions or the comments are based on the Lees and Corp?
Oh, that's okay, okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, CNN, we will now move to the secretary's recommendation. Dr. Savage?
Approval of the minutes of the last Lee County School Board Lees and Corporation meeting held on January 12th, 2021.
Thank you. Directors, you have heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the minutes of the last Lee County Board Lees and Corporation minutes held on January 12th, 2021. I will now enter a motion. Oh, this, and I, this is definitely not correct here. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the January 12th, 2021 Lees and Corp meeting.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Is there any discussion? Sorry? Yeah, you're going to, when it's your turn, you're going to speak. I'm sorry. Okay, is there any discussion? No? Okay, CNN, no discussion. We will now take a vote by hand. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, please.
Ms. Patrica, Ms. Jivinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
And aye, seven zero, motion carries. Okay, directors, you have heard the secretary's recommendation, and they approved to approve the organization resolution of the Lee County School Board Lees and Corporation for the election of officers. Debbie Jordan, President, Mary Fisher, Vice President, Ken A. Savage, Secretary, Amy Desmore, Treasurer.
Madam Chair, just may I clarify, that's a second, that's a second recommendation. The first, the first one you voted, that was-
That was approval of the minutes.
Correct.
Correct.
This one is now the approval of the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Lees and Corporation, and that's the organizing effort that you just read, the recommended offices and the folks to hold those offices.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
And again, we read these verbatim, unfortunately, so I do apologize for that. I will now enter a motion. Okay, so the secretary's recommendation has been moved. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the secretary's recommendation for the organizational resolution for the Lee County School Board Lees and Corp.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Morgan? Is there any discussion? CNN, no discussion, I will now call for the vote by saying aye. And those opposed, like sign. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jivinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
And aye, seven zero, motion carries. We will now move to other business. Please note that comments may only be made in your capacity as directors and/or officers of the corporation. Are there any comments, Ms. Fisher?
I have none.
Thank you, Ms. Jivinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
I'd like it if the superintendent or Attorney DePree Bruno could look into the issue with the change in secretary position midway through the year, because we will be coming up on that again.
That's right.
Just to ensure that we don't have to take official action. I don't think we do, but I just, coming into it next year, I'd like it to be clean. Please and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens? Ms. Gittens? I'm sorry, pardon me?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
No comments.
And Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Dr. Savage?
I have no comments.
And I have none. At this point, having no other business to come before the board, and CNN, no objections, this meeting is adjourned. We will, at this time, reconvene the regular school board meeting of January 25th, 2022. The next on the agenda is the approval to delete the School Board Policy 1.181, emergency requirement for protective gear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is not something that we do often in terms of repealing policy, and we do need to move forward with it as if we would with any other rulemaking process. So at this time, what I am recommending is that the board approves this to move forward to the first reading and then the second reading, so we can probably repeal this particular policy.
Thank you. You have heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approves to delete the School Board Policy 1.181, emergency requirement for protective gear. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the deletion of School Board Policy 1.181 as a first reading at this evening's meeting, emergency requirement for protective gear. Is that the appropriate way to state it?
The only thing is that the first reading has to be at a briefing.
Oh, okay.
So that what I'm asking for is that the board provides us the opportunity to move it to the first reading, and then the second reading at the public hearing.
So, Ms.-
Okay, so I move that we- Approval to delete School Board Policy 1.181 to a briefing for the first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Morgan? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Gittens?
No.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, if you will please record your vote.
You say our vote?
Well, it's, it's on here.
I think, Madam Chair, I think there was a question.
I am so sorry.
I know, I think what the question is, is there public comment for this?
This was already part of the agenda, so the public will be able to come and comment at the briefing.
Okay.
And the public will be able to comment at the public hearing.
That's what we need, clarity. Thank you.
No, thank you, I didn't see that.
I'm affirmative, I can't pull it up at this point.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Gittens. Seven zero, motion carries.
Just for clarification to Ms. Jivinelli, and of course, the public had an opportunity to comment on this particular agenda item at the beginning of the meeting as well.
It was definitely listed on there. So thank you for the clarification, and thank you for the question, Ms. Jivinelli. At this time, we are at board member comments, and so if you don't mind, I will have, I think I'm gonna have Aubrey speak first, if that's okay with you all, because I know she's really wanting to speak. Go ahead, honey. Speak in the mic. Hold it up to you, there you go, now you can talk. They can hear you.
I want to say, can I say about the basement?
You can say, you have, the floor is your floor right now, so if you want to speak on something, you go right ahead.
Thank you for the people who like supported the school board, and I want to say like the, I don't know who said about the bathrooms, but like, I know the janitors like work really, really hard, and I'm a student, so this is kind of odd for me to say, but like, I think it's us as the students fault that it's dirty, I guess. So, yeah, and we like thank the bus drivers, so, yeah.
Do you want to share anything that's going on with schools? Your dance, like you have a dance tomorrow? Do you want to share? The All County?
Yeah. I'm in the All County Dance Group, so I have, I'm going to like the Lee High School tomorrow to do that, and we're doing a Valentine's Day dance at my school, so that'll be really fun.
And you like, I'm doing questions and answers here now. Do you like being on the student advisory? How do you feel about being on student advisory?
I like it because like as a student, I get to share my point of view, so it's cool that like, it's not just like, sort of like the higher people, I guess, it's like what like the students who are in it get to say, so, yeah.
Great, thank you, that was great. So now we will move on to the others. Ms. Fisher, do you have any comments?
I have no further comments this evening, thank you. And thank you, Aubrey, for being here again.
This is her second time with us, yes. Ms. Jivinelli?
Okay, thank you. Aubrey, thank you, I actually think you might have a farm at your house? I was kind of excited about that. So that probably keeps you quite busy, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay, so I just have a couple of things real quick, just some announcements, really, the Edison Festival Light is, parade will be, the night parade is actually February 19th at 7:00 PM, and our schools participate in that, so it's a very exciting event for Lee County. Also, we have the Children's Junior Parade, and that's on the 13th, and we do, and we also have Stomtastics, that's going to be at the Luminary this year in the Cloo Sess Sound, that's the New Old Hotel, and that is on the 12th, February 12th. So, and that's where we have a lot of science fair projects and kids are involved, it's a great day for all of Lee County schools and the students that participate, and the families and students that come out for it. So I just thought I'd bring that. There's also an Adventures Fair that's going on, and that is going to, that's being done virtually this year. This will be the second year in a row that it's been virtual, and it's been, it's interesting to see the science fair projects virtually, and that's something that I wanted to talk about. And then I, I'm just going through my notes, oh, in this, there's some books outside if you want on your way out, you can pick up regarding the Edison Festival Light, it's got some fun little information in there. I just want to also ask Dr. Savage if he could look into the books that were given, especially the one that was my task, but if these books are inappropriate for students, especially the suicide one, that one's really concerning, especially after we've talked, we've talked about this pretty extensively, and how critical it is right now, especially because of the pandemic. It's very alarming, some of these students, and just the environment that they're in, and trying to, you know, actually, just, you know, kids have it tough these days, just trying to grow up and be young adults in this world that's a little tough. So if you could look into those books, and I don't know, Mr. Ripper, if you could send us the full list that you asked, and then maybe we can give that over to staff, and because that would expedite it faster than what I can do personally, and if I give it to the superintendent, his staff can look into it more and get to the bottom of it.
He's already done.
Okay, well, thank you. And I think that is really it. I just wanted to say that real quick. I know we've had lots of calls regarding bus issues, and we just, I just want to express that we love our bus drivers, but we've lost a lot of them due to, for health reasons, for personal reasons, and just for, we have a staff shortage nationwide, and that's one of them right now, and I'm sorry, I'll apologize first, for students that aren't making it to school and aren't getting home, because we are trying to do our best with the personnel that we have. Everyone works very hard at the district, and it's, we're lucky that we still have the staff that we do. So I can commend them for sticking with it, because, I mean, we, the shortage of workers throughout the nation is really a crisis. So we acknowledge it, and we're working really hard to do what's best for our family here at the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jivinelli, for your words. Appreciate that. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I have a couple of things to say. We had a hearing, a student hearing earlier today, and there was a fact in the backup materials that I wanted to bring to your attention. From the time that the incident was reported to a teacher, it took three minutes for two APs and an SRO to show up in the classroom. I thought that was fantastic response time, and I thought it was important to bring that to your attention, in the event you didn't notice that. I didn't report on student advisory. Ms. Fisher, thank you so much for the opportunity to go there and to be with the students. They discussed the student code of conduct, and the feedback they provided was fantastic. And Ms. Rodriguez is no longer the staff liaison, and Ms. Taylor will be taking over, so we go from one incredibly capable, wonderful staff member to another one, and she'll bring, Ms. Taylor will bring a fresh perspective, and I know that she'll be fantastic with those kids. And what I have to tell you is, being in that meeting was like food for the soul for me. Just being around kids, especially at this time, was like food for the soul for me. But I would like to ask the superintendent if we can reinvigorate that committee. There were, it was poorly attended in terms of the number of students, so if we could let the principals know how important that committee is to the board, and the feedback that we receive, hopefully, that committee is also obviously important to the superintendent and, you know, the staff down here in the district. The representation that was there was fantastic, I just fear that the, there's a limited slice of feedback that we're getting. And I think that if principals really encourage their kids to show up to those meetings, they're more likely to do so.
Thank you for bringing that up.
One of the candidates, who will not be one of our finalists, recommended staff discounts, public school staff discounts. If there's a way for us to institutionalize that, meaning as an institution, we reach out to some of the larger companies in this area and ask them to provide discounts. I understand that there are discounts here and there for teachers, I'm not sure that it's coordinated at the district, I'm not sure every teacher knows where to go to get those discounts, but it would be great if every, I'm not going to say a specific company, but it would be great if teachers knew where they could go for a cheaper hotel stay if they're up in Jack- if teachers knew where they could go for a cheaper hotel stay if they're up in Jacksonville, for example, or 25% off a fast food meal, or whatever. You get the point. And then finally, I want to congratulate our three superintendent finalists. I'm gonna say them off the top of my head and see if I say them correctly. Dr. Bernier, Dr. Mollerain.
Mollerwine.
Mollerwine, and Mr. Ramirez. I'm really excited as we finalize or enter into the final stages of this process, and I really do look forward to welcoming them to Lee County. When people ask me where I live, I tell them I live in paradise, and they really believe that's the name of the town where I live, and I have to explain, no, it's, we live where people save all year to spend one week, and this is where we're welcoming these three candidates. So, I'm sorry to give more comments, but I didn't want the night to go without saying those things. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, can you hear me all?
Sure can.
Okay, I wanted to mention that every year, when it's Martin Luther King's birthday, and we have the day off and all of that, but some of the, in fact, all of the activities that I participated in this year, as in every year, remind me of, for one thing, the word unity. And we did our affirmation of unity in our last meeting, but those that attended the events, such as the breakfast that was held by, and I'm not gonna mess it up, but the Omicron Lambda Chapter of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and every year at the breakfast, you can't help but be inspired for another year to think it's a reminder of what we're all about. And I want to congratulate the recipients of the Keeper of the Dream Award this year. If you did not attend, I believe it's online that you can look at it, and, excuse me, it is a very inspiring thing. Congratulations as well to the Dunbar Festival Committee for the gala that they held on a Saturday night, and congratulations to the recipients of their awards as well. And I also attended FGCU Multicultural Student Group, and they had a very good dinner, speaker, and when I left there, I was very inspired that our world is going to be in good hands of young people that are thoughtful, that are kind, that are loving, and they get it. And I think that's all of the activities, and, but I just want to say to my fellow board members, go back and watch sometimes some of our meetings, just on your own, and think about the word unity, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
And I hope you keep warm. Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you. I have just a few comments, and they're based on some things that were said at from the dais and in public speaking. One thing is, Ms. Patrica mentioned discounts, and that's, teachers love discounts. We all love discounts, but I, you know, if there can be any way that we encourage more discounts, that would be great. There are some places, and sometimes you have to really look, but I know when I was teaching, I didn't pay, like I do now, for a Barnes and Noble discount card. There was one for educators. I think Staples has it. There, I believe there's some, I think I got a discount on AT&amp;T, which actually, I never changed. You know, once you have a contract, you just keep that old contract. And some of the things that I took advantage of at the time was because I was a member of Talc, the Teachers Union, and some of the things are offered through FEA or NEA, so there are some organizations that also offer these, but, you know, sometimes you need to just kind of dig on it. Okay, also from the dais, there was a mention about talking to the, having the superintendent look into some of the books that Mr. Roper has mentioned. I just want to remind everyone that, and we've talked about this numerous times, we have a process for this. It is not up to the superintendent, it is not up to individual media specialists or librarians to take a list of 100 books and go through everything. No, this goes out on a particular form. A committee is formed, and we have a process. I've been assured that the process is being followed. I had, just this past week, as a matter of fact, a constituent was mentioning something about this, and I said, oh, there's a form, and if you can't find it, I'll send you the link, and I sent her the link, and she was happy to see it. But it's very easy to find. I think it's the page that we established quite a few months ago. I don't remember exactly when, when the Parents Rights, it's the page with the Parents Rights on it, and there's a long, long list of different pieces of information that the public can access, including various forms. And so, if you go to that page on the website, you can find book challenge form or something like that, and if you can't find it, I can send you, I can send you the link. And one final note from public speaking, there was a mention about people, and I know I was the one that said something about bilingualism today, and I certainly would never, just looking at a person, say, oh, well, that person speaks only English. However, there was a specific question on the Ray and Associates application, and there was a specific place for languages spoken other than English. Of the five, there was one person, and yes, that person happened to have a Spanish surname and was born in Puerto Rico. Anyway, I know at least I did not take it for granted that, you know, other people, because they didn't have Spanish surnames, they couldn't speak Spanish, or Italian, or Korean, or Chinese, or Arabic, or whatever languages. So, I just wanted to point that out, because we are here to disperse information. As always, thank you to all of you for coming out to speak, and those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Appreciate that. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, so first of all, I want to thank everyone who provided input on the superintendent candidates. Every comment was read by me, and I believe it was read by every person sitting here at this table. A number, well, I shouldn't say a number, but some asked questions that I believe will be helpful in the finalist process next week. The comments were thoughtful and very, very much appreciated. Some people asked why there were no female candidates, and in the pool, the applicant pool that Ray and Associates began with, 25% were female. So, there were female applicants, but they did not move forward because they either did not have the qualifications, or the experience, or something that we had put in our directive to them in terms of our expectations for qualifications. I'm gonna say it, because I'm all about pre-K. Registration is open for families who wish to enroll their children, and some are voluntary pre-K. It's open to students who are five years old by September 1st, and have not already accessed a VPK program. I want to call attention to some of the items that we approved tonight on the agenda, and it has to do with the hard work that our staff is doing to provide partnership, partnerships with opportunities for our students. So, for example, we approved an academic affiliation agreement with Florida Gateway College for dual enrollment opportunities for students in aquaculture and/or agriculture technology programs at Island Coast High School and Eastlake County High School. We approved an academic affiliation agreement with Embry-Riddle Gates Aerospace Institute. Now, that has been in place before, but I just want to remind people that there are dual enrollment opportunities for students in aerospace technology programs at Benita Springs High School and Island Coast High School. So, students who are in middle school and thinking about where they want to go to high school, really need to understand that there are some great opportunities for dual enrollment for children in this community. In addition, we approved an academic affiliation agreement with Genesis Care to provide facilities for the clinical preparation of medical assisting students. We approved an academic affiliation agreement with Coral Trace Health to provide facilities for clinical preparation for the practical nursing and nurse assisting students. And finally, and this is terrific, I think some of these are new, we approved affiliation agreements with the University of Florida, New York University, University of Wisconsin, and Florida Southwest University for placement of student-teacher interns with the school district of Lee County. That is huge. We, you know, our staff is working really hard to expand our exposure to people who are interested in the field of education, and are working to attract students who are interested in teaching to the school district. So, I just wanted to compliment staff because it's clear that we are working hard to expand opportunities for our students, and also to increase the, our workforce. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and thank you so much for highlighting that. That's really important, because the work is definitely happening, and I think that people, a lot of times, it's assumed that this is not a nine-to-five job. This is a 24/7, especially even for us. We are always working. We're always reading. We're always trying to make sure that we're looking at the best interest of the children. The same with our staff. They don't just work nine-to-five and clock out and go home. They're always there trying to figure out what's the next step. So, thank you very much for saying that. And also, I just would like to thank our three finalists. Looking forward to a meeting with them. And you were speaking about the pre-K, and also, the middle schoolers are, all the little cards are coming out for middle school, for high school. Everybody's getting excited about, where am I going? Where's my friends going? So, be watching for those postcards of the schools, and take the opportunity to really look at, you know, your choices for those different schools, as well as making sure that you, don't forget to turn in your paperwork, because the sooner you get it in, the better it is for you. And with that, Mr. Prey Bruno, do you have any comments?
I just have one thing just to clarify, because I know that sometimes constituents ask me this question. I'm sure they asked the board this question in terms of sunshine, and who does it apply to? So, the sunshine.
Mr. Prey Bruno, is your mic on? Thank you.
Is it on?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Not really.
Can you put it a little bit higher for me in the back, please?
It should be okay.
Okay. Sometimes those questions come up in terms of, with whom does the sunshine law apply? And it's really important. Sometimes you'll see the superintendent and I are speaking. We are not subject to the sunshine law. It applies to the public officials, so to the seven board members. They must make sure that whenever they communicate, they do it in the sunshine. In staff, it's really important for individuals to understand that staff can have individual conversations and briefings with the board. There is case law that is very explicit about that. Any staff member can have conversations with the board, and that is allowed by law. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that comes up a lot in terms of questions, and I have no further comments.
Could you please also clarify, though, that we as human beings, you are allowed to have a conversation about, how's your family, or anything else that has nothing to do with the work of the board?
I know that we, my instructions at least, and my guidance to the board is to err on the side of caution, because I am very careful with regards to sunshine violations, and I want to make sure that there is never any allegations or accusations. However, it is very clear in the sunshine law that what they are speaking of is with regards to district business and things that will come before them, or foreseeably can come before them for a vote. That is what the sunshine law is about. So, if you see them laughing with each other on the dais, that does not mean that they have violated sunshine, because they're allowed to make a joke, or ask, how's your daughter doing, or what did you have for dinner? They're allowed to go have lunch together and say, you know, so long as they're not talking about district business, anything that can come before them, or foreseeably can come before them, that is what the sunshine law is about. It requires that meetings be noticed, it requires that it be open, and it requires that all of their discussions with regards to district business be done in the open. That is sunshine.
Thank you, Mr. Prey Bruno.
Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, I'm interested in a few comments. First, I just wanted to thank Aubrey for making a return visit to seeing us again. You know, it's easy for us to talk about children, to feel like the work of our district is all about children, but sometimes children can feel very far away in this setting, so it's very important that not only are you here, but you're visually here. But there's something else very unique about Aubrey that I want to make sure everyone knew, is at least who's in attendance who might be watching, is that Aubrey and I came to meet virtually through the pandemic. I had not met her in person, and is really where I heard her unique story of what she did as a child in our middle schools, and trying to lift up other people. And so, I just wanted to highlight for folks that one of the things that Aubrey did that was so powerful was, she'd leave notes for staff, staff who she would come into contact with, try to lift up their spirits, to just recognize them doing, really making contributions. And so, you know, she wasn't being insincere when she talked about custodians and bus drivers, because those are all the people within the school that she would find a way to acknowledge as a child, as a student, who really lifted up the culture of her entire middle school. And so, that's really high the chance, and so I personally reached out to her and her teacher, who brought Aubrey to my attention, and really was very appreciative of what she was doing. The message that I've had to everyone since I've been in this role, since the beginning of the school year, is all about that through this tremendous adversity, the thing that really helps us is each other. The spirit of being able to lift each other up, that is really what can help us get through such a difficult time. And what better example than a student who chose to do that for adults, who are going through a very difficult time, trying to serve all their students. So, thank you, Aubrey, for setting such a profound example for me, for inspiring me to try to lead the school system when I knew that I have students out there like you who give us hope for the present and the future. So, thank you, Aubrey, for your presence today. And I'm gonna see you tomorrow at the All County Dance Showcase. So, I'll be there. I'll have my two little ones ready to watch you. My youngest daughter, I know, wants to be a dancer. She also wants to be a princess and a mermaid, so we'll see what wins out on that. The other piece of just hope for the future, one of the great privileges I had was the marching, the march that we went through for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and it was amazing to go from the heart of Dunbar all the way to Centennial Park, and I felt connected to history throughout this time period. It was really invigorating to be able to march alongside so many people. There were hymns being sung. It was really a powerful thing. My father's mother, who was a huge, huge fan of Dr. King, is who's long passed, but she was in the March on Washington, and so I felt a strange connection over time to her, and that work that I hear was doing this in a completely different time period, but yet, some of the same themes and challenges that they were dealing, were still challenging and taking that mantle today. So, I think it's really exciting to celebrate that history. I appreciate that being brought up. Also recognized was, we have two women on this governance team who are women of action from the Brunson Foundation. I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Betsy Vaughn and our attorney, Kathy Depuy Bruno. I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Betsy Vaughn and our attorney, Kathy Depuy Bruno. And then also just a few questions that we had that were listed. One of the, the issues was about the work perks that we had, that we do actually have an intranet site to do it, but I think we could add to that. Plus our HR area, I know has incentives and things like apartment discounts and things like that, but we could ask. I know they put out a newsletter with those things, but trying to get that information out to our teachers, we certainly can do a better job of that. And, oh, yes, the other comment that was asked, a board question earlier was about specifically the volunteers in the schools. And so I did get, Ms. Stillwell mentioned to me from the pandemic that actually academic volunteers, so people who are tutoring in the classrooms, providing academic opportunities, they have been allowed to go back in the school. So any educational benefit has been permitted. The things that have been, that are being reassessed were specifically in the area of like people just coming, extra bodies on campus to just have lunch, visiting a class, not providing any educational benefit, but really just trying to be there. That's, that's the additional extras that we will be evaluating. But in terms of academic, academic benefit rather, those things are still permitted and that was, I was, thank you for sending that information as well. Yep, Ms. Patrica?
Would that include extracurriculars that have an academic benefit like Interact and Rota Kids?
I'm sorry, Dela.
Would that include extracurriculars that have a positive academic impact like Interact and Rota Kids?
I, the specific programs, I am kind of looking for guides. I know some of the academic programs, I know that some of them have competitions, things where they've been able to earn scholarships. I know that those things have been permitted. Those specific programs, I'm kind of looking, yes, I'm seeing a nod from Dr. Spiro. So yes, thank you, Dr. Spiro. All right, I tried to answer the questions that I heard that I had written down. So those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you so much. Mr. Prey Bruno?
I'm sorry, during my comment, I forgot to mention one very important thing, so I'm going to go back to the boring legal stuff. I just want to make sure that it's clear too, that there's been allegations with regards to the board and sunshine and those allegations have been reviewed by the state attorney's office who has come back and said that there was no violation of law, no criminal violations and no sunshine violations. So I wanted to make sure that that was very clear as well. And I can't, I want to just piggyback on what Dr. Savage said. My grandmother walked, marched with Dr. King, both in DC as well as the Edmund Pettus Bridge. So it's really important that we always try to remember to unify and remember the sacrifices of those that came before us and for us. And to our student here, that's what makes me do my job is you and all of our 95,000 kids. So on behalf of the attorneys, you keep us motivated. Thank you.
Next scheduled meeting of the board. On Monday, January 31st, there will be a school board workshop at 12:30. On Tuesday, February 1st, there will be a school board briefing at 9:00 AM and a school board special meeting at, I'm sorry, can, can we not speak from, can you not hear me? On Tuesday, February 1st, there will be a school board briefing at 9:00 AM and a school board special meeting at 12:30 PM. On Monday, February 7th, there will be a school board workshop at 1:00 PM. On Tuesday, February 8th, there will be a school board briefing at 1:00 and an action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.